This is Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. And we have one case on the agenda. So Ms. Sims, do you want to take it away?
Yes, ma'am. Let me share my... Uh-oh. My screen is here.
Technology is here to help us.
Don't seem like yourself in listening. Share my screen.
You should be able to share it now, Ms. Sims. I passed presenter privileges to you.
Oh, okay.
See, it wasn't you. Just thought it was.
Yes, ma'am, I did. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Akri Sam, serving as the ZAC Planner for the City of Birmingham. Our first case today on the agenda is ZAC 2020-00026. And this is in the Crestline Neighborhood. Application to change zone district boundaries from R3 Single Family District to D5, filed by Corey Johnston, the owner, for the properties located at 4424, 4428, 4432, and 4446 Montavalo Road. The proposed use is to allow construction of 23 townhomes. The city's long-range land use identifies the property as residential low district. The proposed rezoning request is not consistent with the city's long-range land use. The neighborhood's recommendation, the Executive Committee of the Crestline Neighborhood Association held a meeting on November 23rd, 2020, to review the proposed project and voted to not recommend the request. The vote was one approved and four denied. Their decision to not support the rezoning requests were for the following reasons. The first reason was that the committee felt that there were too many unknown factors. Originally, the project had 17 units, and now they're proposing 23. The second was the space was too small to house 23 units. Third, their property value has decreased due to the excess rental properties in the area and would prefer all three Single Family District zoning to remain for their neighborhood. Therefore, approved, the neighborhood recommended the following Q conditions to be prohibited. And there are 31 of those conditions. The first was that bed and breakfast and childcare center, community garden, excuse me, a family day night care home, a family group day, a night care home, a farmer's market, personal instructor, a place of worship, school, elementary and middle, school, high school, solar panel, ground mounted, an adult care center, cellular microwave or two-way towels, a communal living facility, an intermittent cemetery, manufactured housing, market stand, reservoir, water tank, utility substation, water sewer pumping station, accessory childcare center, amphitheater, a Packer Arena, dwelling accessory, a fitness center, an intermittent colibarium, an intermittent musoleum, rummitch sale, a stadium, and temporary storage. Staff's recommendation to ZAC, the proposed rezoning request is not consistent with the city's long-range land use, and it is incompatible with single-family resident uses located immediately east and west, creating an encroachment into the single-family residential neighborhood, which could possibly cause land use conflicts. It is therefore the recommendation of staff that the proposed rezoning is not recommended for approval. But if approved, the neighborhood and staff recommends the following Q conditions, the ones I've just read, and staff added two additional ones. And they are, the townhomes from Gladstone Avenue and Montavalo Road shall use those streets as the front of the structure to create a more walkable sense of community. Three, any fence/wall construction shall comply with the requirements in Title I, Chapter 4, Section 5 of the zoning ordinance, walls and fences. The neighborhood applicant and staff had a virtual meeting. The neighborhood met with staff on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. As a result of the meeting, the neighborhood voted to approve the proposed rezoning request with some additional Q conditions. The vote was 23 approved and seven denied. And the staff approved, along with the neighborhood, of the following Q conditions with some addition ones. And the additional Q conditions they added was that the sidewalk and street trees will be along, required along Gladstone Avenue and Montavalo Road. Architectural features mimicking front facade shall be required on any building that is not reoriented to front on Gladstone Avenue and Montavalo Road. An exterior lighting for security and aesthetics will be required to downlight and not encroach on neighboring property. The zoning advisory committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, to review the applicant's rezoning request and voted to approve the proposed rezoning request with the following Q conditions submitted by the neighborhood and staff. That ends my presentation.
And then the ones requested by ZAC, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They were the same ones.
Well, I know we have Ms. White here, and I know we have the applicant here. Do either of you have anything to add to the discussion or any anything else that we need to know? Mrs. White? Saw your hand go up. And now I've lost you completely. There you are. Ms. White?
I'll let Barbara go first, but yeah, we would like to add something. We have just a quick presentation, but if Barbara comes on, we'll let you go.
Okay, well, I'm... Ms. White, are you trying to talk? Or did we lose you?
Yes, I am trying.
There she is.
Where?
Where?
Oh. Oh, yeah, I am trying to talk, but Corey, you go on and do your thing first, if you wouldn't... I mean, Ms. Abbott, if you would let Corey do his first.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. You're the only... Well, I won't say you're the only two people who may want to speak, but you are the two I recognized. So Corey, go ahead, and Ms. White will follow you.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so I've got Jason Kessler here. He is with the building company, CADCO, that we'll be using for this development. Kimberly, if you don't mind giving him access to share his screen. I know you had to do that with Ms. Sims. So I just wanted to cover the bases there.
Yes, he now has presenter privileges.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna move my computer so you can see us both. You need to turn my mic off then.
You... I'm... Oh, you are. You're right.
I'm almost ready. Okay, thank you guys for having us today. We are excited to, you two are wonderful, and present today. We're excited about this project. On this PowerPoint here, you can use...
Yeah, it's coming up yours. So we got two computers here. I'm sorry, you guys, little technical difficulties.
You can see the existing property. The subject property is outlined in yellow.
And what we've got is the McIlwain Church, the abandoned church there, the asphalt parking lot, and two single-family residential homes. This overhead shot kind of shows exactly what's around us. We've got single-family homes to the, I guess, the west and the south of us. And then across the street, we've got the current McIlwain Church. And then going north, we've got the McIlwain Cemetery, the Gladstone Townhomes, and the Preschool Partners Daycare. This is our proposed layout for the subdivision. The way that we have this designed is that there would be one entrance and exit for our development off of Gladstone Avenue. We're proposing 23 townhomes, all with two-car garages, so that we don't have, you know, a bunch of people parking on the street. We'd like to have everybody park inside enclosed with the garages, if possible. And then we have 12 guest parking spots as well. Touching a little bit more on the neighboring property, we feel that this is a unique piece of property in that it is contiguous to single-family homes, as I said, but also contiguous to the church and the other properties that I've already described. It's not just a residential neighborhood. There are a few different property uses at play around the subject property. In addition, the subject property is located on Main Thoroughfare, being Montavalo Road. And from a zoning perspective, we feel the lower-density residential doesn't make proper sense on such a busy, high-traffic road that is also surrounded by other land uses. We feel it would be proper transitional zoning to have higher-density residential on the main road that then moves to lower-density residential when transitioning into the quote-unquote "neighborhood." Touching again on the neighboring property, there's a distinct change in land use as you move from the single-family detached homes on Montavalo Road going north. The current use of the subject property is residential, but it is, as everyone knows, an abandoned, dilapidated church. Across the street is the current McIlwain Church. And moving north, there are more examples of non-residential uses on Montavalo Road, such as the Winn-Dixie Grocery, Express Oil Change, a large shopping center, another church, a storage facility. And so a townhouse development, in our opinion, would be an appropriate land use, given the current use of the subject property. Also, because of the Gladstone Townhomes being contiguous, we feel that kind of blends in with what we're trying to do and the other surrounding land uses. You know, we've heard the opinion, obviously, that the subject property should be designated residential low density because of the adopted land use map. However, four properties contiguous to this are also designated residential low density. However, none of them have that actual land use. These are the aforementioned church, daycare, cemetery, and townhouse development. The concerns that our proposed development would not be in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood or that it could start encroachment into the residential area are off-base, in our opinion. Currently, the old McIlwain Church obviously does not have residential character. It is an old abandoned church with a massive asphalt parking lot. Our community would be, in our opinion, a huge upgrade in terms of aesthetics and would give the city and neighborhood a residential product that currently does not exist. For the same reasons, our development would not be an encroachment into the residential homes. You know, we've been talking about how this is currently zoned residential, and a church is a permitted land use under the current zoning. And so I think if there is a concern about the residential feel and character of the neighborhood, while the church, it may be an accepted land use, we feel our townhome development would be more in keeping with residential character and aesthetics for the neighborhood. A lot of people have asked us about our townhouse development as it relates to the Gladstone next door. And while that is, we think, a very attractive community and was done very well, there are some differences that we'd like to point out. Our projected sales price for what we're calling the Legacy at Montavalo is the 400s and up. Sales price for the Gladstone, I believe, was in the 200s on average. Our lot width is 25 feet and up for these homes, so not, you know, narrow townhouses that you see a lot of places. Average lot width of the Gladstone was about 16 feet. Again, garages, which I think is a huge difference and a huge advantage of our development, is every home would have its own garage, where the Gladstone doesn't have any garages. We're talking about 2,000 square feet homes, heated and cooled. And that could be, you know, it could be a little bit more than that, but that's kind of where we're starting from. The Gladstone is a little bit smaller, and ours is a gated community, whereas the Gladstone is not. We want to be able to provide, you know, privacy and security to our clients, and that is why we'd like to gate it. Going to the last few slides is just some examples of our work, specifically the Calton Hill Townhome Development off of Montclair Road. These townhouses are in the City of Birmingham as well, and it's a project we completed in 2019. We built 17 townhomes, and the average sales price there was 584,000. This is the kind of aesthetic, the kind of style of home architecture that we would like to bring to the Legacy at Montavalo. These are some interior photos of the same townhouses. You can kind of see the finishes that we like to put in our homes, the kind of amenity packages that we use, some bathroom, kitchen, dining room pictures. Again, very similar style and amenity packages for the homes at the Legacy at Montavalo is what we'd like to bring. And just a little bit about our company.
Those were in the City of Birmingham, so it wasn't actually Mountain Brook City Limits, those townhomes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right. We built, we built single-family homes in the City of Mountain Brook inside the same subdivision, but the townhomes on the top of the property are City of Birmingham's. Corey's right about that. And just a little bit about our company, so people can kind of get familiar with our building company and, you know, feel comfortable with, you know, what we bring to the table. We are CADCO Homes. We've been in business for over 35 years. And we are a local company. We only build in the Birmingham area. We build communities such as the aforementioned Calton Hill, the Cove at Overton, Pump House Village, Westminster, and more. And we have quite a few projects going right now as well, including finishing up the single-family homes at Calton Hill. Just to finish off, you know, again, we're very excited about this. We think this could be a really big addition to the neighborhood and community. As Ms. Sims noted, when the neighborhood met with us and were able to hear our plans and revoted, it was, I believe, a little bit more than three to one, so in favor of this community and the zoning requests we're asking for. And obviously, the ZAC meeting went well, and we got a recommendation there as well. So the church, I think, is also worth noting, is very much in favor of this. And they're not just selling, as everybody knows, and moving on and trying to, you know, make a buck. They're obviously our neighbor as well, so they're right across the street. So what goes here is very important to them as well, and they're very much in favor of this. So that's it, as far as the presentation goes. And we'd love to hear from you guys and see what questions you have for us. Thank you.
I will ask at this time, does any members of the committee have any questions? Counselor Hilliard?
Well, first of all, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I love it when I see projects like this come into Birmingham to help us improve our communities and economic development. I looked at the, the quality of the home is absolutely gorgeous. I'm a real estate broker, so you know, I have a little infinity for nice things. And to see things come and add value to our community and to our city. So, Madam President, I like what I see, and that's it.
Okay, good. Thank you. I would like for you to move up to your plat drawing. It was either maybe Slide 2 or 3 early on. 3, Slide 3. Okay. The only concern that I have is in the, I guess that's the western end of your development. Those lots that are turned sideways to Montavalo Road, those houses really should be facing Montavalo Road instead of turned sideways to it and having all of their back ends up against the single-family residents next door. I realize you wouldn't get as many houses on if you did that, but it's still looking more appropriate.
True. Sorry.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. We looked at it a few different ways when we were designing this. And one of the main issues that we ran into was fire truck access, ingress, egress. That's always kind of hard to design around. You know, we played with this a few different times. Like I said, it's been a while since we first designed this. But I do believe, if I remember correctly, we ran into problems with trying to get a fire truck in and out. We also kind of wanted to be able to offer a couple different...
I don't hear you anymore.
...in the road are deeper homes.
Okay.
More square footage.
Can you repeat, can you repeat what you said? Because you went out completely, and we could see your lips move, but we couldn't hear anything.
Sorry, we're having a little technical difficulties here.
Yes, we understand.
I know y'all have gone fully virtual, huh?
Well, yeah, we've kind of had to.
So we're just gonna go with one computer here.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, whatever. You can pull up the presentation later. What I was saying was that we were, in designing this, obviously laid it out a few different ways. One of the main issues that we ran into was fire truck access. We've got to have a fire truck turnaround, and if we face those homes at the end of the street towards Montavalo Road, that would create a situation where we really didn't have anywhere for the fire truck to get in and out without having to bake back straight out, which obviously they would not allow. And then the other point I was making was that, you know, this is, you know, what we consider to be a higher-end subdivision, and so we want, we don't want to have one or two plans. We'd like to have a few different plans and a few different price points for our clients. And so at the end of the road, what you see there with those homes, that I guess the sides would be on Montavalo Road, those are deeper. You can see that those units are deeper than the rest. And so we kind of wanted to have...
We're not seeing...
Something where we would be able to offer more square footage.
We're not seeing anything. We're seeing a black screen. So something's wrong.
Sorry.
Yeah. I'm trying to envision that turnaround for the fire truck because the screen is black.
Can you hear us now?
Now, we can hear you. We just can't see anything.
There's a volume just all the way down. Ms. Abbott, can you hear us now?
Yeah, we can hear you. We just can't see anything.
Sorry. We can, can you pull up the presentation?
Mr. Kessler, is it you who needs sharing privileges? Or does Mr. Johnson need them?
Mr. Johnson. I had him, and my computer was acting up.
All right. I am transferring them over to him.
Share the presentation?
Yeah, just so they can kind of look at it. Do you have that accessible? Okay. Are you actually sharing? We're trying to pull up the presentation right now. His actually got a little bit more information than the one I was sharing, including our landscape plan, which we'd like to show to you guys, so you can kind of see what we want to do in terms of not just aesthetics for the neighborhood, the kind of landscaping we want to use, but also for privacy for the homes that are around us so that, you know, we can make it, you know, the least imposing that we can for our surrounding neighbors. We're still not seeing the ability to share on Corey's computer. Is there something we should be doing?
If you are pulling it up on the computer that Corey is using to access the meeting, then he should be able to either go to the bottom menu. There's, there's a button next to "Start Video" in between "Start Video" and "Recording" that says "Share." If he presses that, he should be able to share his screen or to share a file. If you've actually opened WebEx through the program and you downloaded it, it's also available as a menu option in the top toolbar. You'll see an option that says "Share." You can share your screen, or you can share a file, or you can share an application. Do you see that?
Yes, ma'am. I think I've got to allow it on my computer, since this is a WebEx event, not a meeting. I think it's something to do with my computer, so hold on one sec.
Ms. Sims, would you be able to share what you have? Because don't you have a... If somebody else could pull the plan out, then we could kind of discuss that question.
Is your computer just being...
Ms. Sims, do you have a copy of their presentation on your computer? Okay.
Sharing rights.
Maybe that would, that would work.
Okay. Okay. She said, "Now I'm the presenter." Okay.
Okay.
Jason, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah. Okay, show us where the turnaround is. Or tell us where the turnaround is.
Okay. So that, the road, where you see the three parking spaces at the end of the road, close to Montavalo Road, that is a hammerhead, we call a hammerhead, for the fire truck turnaround. And so if we were to take those units at the end of our new road and face them to Montavalo, again, in designing this with our engineers, we just couldn't figure out a good way to make that work and get that fire truck somewhere and in there. There's other ways to do it. I mean, we could form some kind of a cul-de-sac or something like that. But like I said, we like this design. We like this option because we actually have specific plans that we have drawn before for townhouses that that's what the footprints essentially are at the end of the road. And another main reason we wanted to do that, and we like this design, is because of the fact that we could build a different product, not just one or two of the same plan. We didn't want it to feel and look cookie cutter. We wanted these to be, you know, fairly custom homes. And so that, doing it this, designing it this way, gives us the opportunity to build those five homes, maybe a little bit bigger if we wanted to, bigger square footage for those people that might be looking for, you know, a little bit more square footage. And these have little courtyards kind of in between the home and the rear of the home. Again, it's a little, you know, green space area for people. These are just footprints, so it does not actually show that, but there are little courtyards in the middle of each of these homes. So, but those are the two main reasons that it was designed this way.
Okay, well, those, those five lots look much narrower than the other lots do, as I see it.
They are. They're narrower. They're, but they're, obviously, they're deeper. And so there is some give and take, but ultimately, these, these homes allowed us to do more in terms of, you know, the square footage that we could get. It's not a ton more. Obviously, it's not a drastic difference between the two, but these are supposed to be kind of our bigger, bigger homes that we'd like to be able to do.
So what is the width of those lots?
Uh if I remember correctly, you know, now that I don't have my screen, it's kind of hard to see, but I'm, I believe those are 25 feet wide. And that would be the minimum. And so when I, when I was talking earlier about the different um lot widths in relation to the Gladstone, 25 would be our minimum, which would be those narrower lots. The rest of the lots would actually be wider than that.
Okay. Well, maybe the one dwelling that faces, whose side will face Montevallo Road can be built to sort of look like it's facing Montevallo Road. You know, just with some design tweaks.
Yes, ma'am, and a couple of the neighbors also brought that up at this last ZAC meeting, if if I remember correctly. And and we told them that we would design these um in a way that, you know, they wouldn't just look like the side of a building or the rear of a building uh with no thought put into, you know, what it's going to be looking like, look like when you're driving by or if you are next door to it. So we realized that um because of what's surrounding us on the residential side, we do need to be cognizant of trying to make this as attractive and look like a front as much as we can.
Okay, well, I'd be interested to see the design. Which I realize you don't have yet. Uh Mrs. White, are you ready to speak? Just take yourself off mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, just barely.
Well, that's because I turned the thing down. Um. I went by Carlton Hill, Carlton Hill today um because we have been interested in the uh what the facade's going to look like on Montevallo. And in the queue conditions, we asked, we are uh number five is architectural fig- features mimicking front facade should be required for any building that is not reoriented to front on Gladstone or Montevallo. And also that another one is the sidewalks and the fence, which is to be uh table one, chapter four, section five of the zoning order ordinances. And um the wall that I saw at Carlton Hill today, looking into Carlton Hill, lovely, the sides not so lovely. It's just a uh concrete block fence with a brick on top of it or stone on top of it. I wa- I drove through, it's lovely in there. And the fence from your, from the other side looks not, I mean, wall, it's a wall, not a fence. Uh looks nice, but looked to me like there's going to be a lot of upkeep on keeping that um washed facade on the, the on the wall. That's just a comment uh of my thoughts. Uh and I was wondering if those, those last three, two, three, four, five and six that are listed on your agenda, Ms. Abbott, right before oh business, are those in effect? Or would those be in effect? Unmute yourself.
All, all of the conditions are in play. Both the ones suggested by the neighborhood and the ones suggested by the ZAC. That's what we're consider, that's what we're considering.
Thank. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any, anyone else who would like to speak or ask any questions?
Uh Councilor Abbott?
Yes, who is it?
It's Tim Gambrell.
Okay, hey, Tim.
Hey, um, yeah, I just kind of wanted to uh, you know, further comment on the wall and the buildings. You know, on that layout you saw there, the buildings that you spoke of, the face, the side faces the street. The rest of them, the rear faces the street. So every one of these lots is a double-fronted lot. You know, the rear of the building facing the street. And then at the street, they plan to build an eight-foot-high concrete wall, which is not allowed. And so the, the, the development's going to require several, many, many variances. Those are two of them. Um and so that's, those are the part of the queues that are in there. I think that, you know, some of what we've talked about as far as a townhouse's location, I could imagine that potentially happening. But it just seems like the design is a little backward, you know, the houses, you know, face inside. And so you're driving down the road on Montevallo, you're going to see an eight-foot concrete wall and a rooftop behind it. You know, and it may be landscaped very nicely, but, you know, I'm curious, that's another thing I'm curious about. They do have buffer requirements for landscaping. You know, I'm guessing that they, I don't know if they have enough room to accommodate those. Um there's a whole lot of issues with, with variances on this one. And um so I just wanted to let you know that those are our concerns, the double-fronted lots, the wall at the street edge. Um and then the number of variances are going to be required, I think is, is, is what our concerns are. And that's, and that's reflected in the queues that have been recommended.
Okay, so I would like to know what variances would be included because I would not vote to approve anything that's going to require a lot of variances. If you require a lot of variances, it means your project is inappropriate for the piece of property that you've selected.
Well, I think that's part of the comment. I, I think we'd have to go through it and to really enumerate them, um uh examine it a little deeper um with the most prime site plan and dimensions. Uh it would take, you know, a little bit of time, you know, a couple of, you know, hour or so to really investigate it. But I, I think in the past that we've noticed, I mean, one of them, the number one, they want to build an eight-foot wall at the street. Not allowed. Four-foot walls allowed, and it has to be opaque or like a picket fence style, so you could see through it or some sort of metal, you know, wrought iron style fence, you know, that you could see through. Um I don't think we necessarily object to somebody wanting to gate a street. But when you start the wall off, you know, it just, it's just a, you know, bad feeling, you know, and, and it just doesn't look appropriate, especially at the street edge. Uh you can have higher walls in the rear and side, uh but at the street edge, you know, it's, it becomes, you know, a real challenge, you know, for an eight-foot wall to be placed there. And then once again, the lots face, they're, they're double-fronted, you know, so the rear faces the street. And then our ordinance, you're required, when you have double-fronted lots, to do a really severe buffer. And I don't know if they have room for that. Um but those are some of our concerns.
Okay, now, on what I'm reading here says, the townhomes fronting Gladstone Avenue and Montevallo Road shall orient their front facade to those streets to create a more walkable sense of community. Well, if you have an eight-foot wall, there isn't going to be a walk, walkable sense of community. It will be more like you're walking past the prison yard.
Yeah, and the next, and the next queue deals with the fence.
Yeah, any fence wall construction shall comply with the requirements in Title I, Chapter Four, Section Five of the zoning ordinance. So that precludes an eight-foot fence.
Right, and that's, that's the point to me, is that if those units that are on Montevallo were flipped around, garages in the rear, they could still load from the rear in the garage. The front facade faces the street, the appropriate fence at the street edge. You know, it starts to feel a lot better. So those are our concerns, I mean, I'm just trying to find that middle ground, you know?
Well, but you can't ha- if this is required as part of the zoning change, then they can't go and get variances to preclude what has been required in order to get the rezoning.
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess I should ask the developers, can you still develop your development if you're required to go by what we're considering? We can't hear you. I think you're muted. Uh oh.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes.
Um, was the question, could we build the development as designed? As designed under the current zoning without variances?
Well, no, it's if we pass this today and we's, we base our rezoning on what's being required, then the question is, can you build your development? Because we're not going to let you have an eight-foot fence on Montevallo Road, and the houses all have to be oriented to Montevallo Road and Gladstone. So. You know, I just want to make sure that you're not assuming you're going to build it the way you originally thought you were going to build it.
Uh, right. And we've talked about it um in both neighborhood meetings and ZAC meetings and that variances would be required for us to be able to build um this development the way we would prefer to build it. Um again, you know, it goes back to um not just Carlton Hill. Um even though, again, Carlton Hill was designed somewhat similarly, it was gated, we did have a, a wall. A single street that had homes that fronted uh each other, basically faced each other. And it was just a really, I mean, it, it went really well, it, it did really well. We think it was a great addition to the city. And seeing that this is similar, it's close, it's um off of a main road, whereas that was Montclair, this is Montevallo. Um and just talking with a lot of the people at the church and the neighborhood in general uh and telling them what we wanted to do, this just felt like it fit, it felt like we could make this work and that it would be very highly sought after. Um but no, at the, and the, the thing about the wall, um, you know, again, we're aware that it's four feet tall. We, we've known that for quite some time. Um and I'm, again, I've, I've said it in the meetings prior, but we're not at all opposed to doing something. Um, you know, I don't know if it could be four feet tall and then, you know, something on top in terms of decorative iron or something. Or in Carlton Hill. And so we're, we do understand that there are going to be variances that we would have to request and, and we are happy to uh in, you know, whatever case may be, um necessary, work with the city um on design aspects, if there are concerns about that. But um, yeah, again, we, we think that the design works really well and it fits what we've done in the past in different neighborhoods, but uh fully aware that it would require some variances to build it as a design.
So what variances would be required? I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute, now I'm unmuted. What variances would be required to build it as we are looking to approve it today?
Um, you know, at the top of my head, I don't know exactly which ones. I know that Tim, the one that's, the ones that Tim uh noted in terms of of um the street frontage um in terms of that, the homes face.
Double-fronted lots and then the setback requirement off of Montevallo Road along with the wall height. So it would be, in my understanding, three variances total. Um the double-fronted lots, the setback, um and then the wall height as well.
And like Tim mentioned, we might have, um I don't know myself off the top of my head, but uh in terms of um not buffering, I wouldn't think possibly, it could be possibly a landscape buffer requirement that we wouldn't quite be meeting um or green space, something like that. Um could be, but I can't, I can't say with any certainty about that one. But Cory's been working on that side more than I have been.
Okay, so where is the buffer that's required?
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, I'm not sure exactly what would be required, and that's something that the state plan um was tried to, and we had a landscape architect, Jenny Carpenter, who's worked for us for years, designed it for us. And we told her that, you know, we need to get tall, um, you know, mature trees around the perimeter of the development um to provide some privacy for the neighbors, the residential neighbors specifically. Um, you know, whether those be cryptomeria, arborvitus, something tall that's going to be um able to grow and, and provide some, what if a buffer or screen? And then on Montevallo Road, um again, the Monta- uh the landscape plan that we submitted shows um, you know, lush, mature landscaping, uh planter beds, something that, what we don't want people to think is that it would just be a concrete wall as you drive down Montevallo Road. We would more than likely build this out of block, but then we would put a brick facade on it, similar to the front of Carlton Hill, and that would be painted. Um and so it would be something like creeping fig or some kind of ivy or something to grow up the wall so that it becomes more green, it looks more like landscaping, and then a ton of trees, bushes, you know, um annuals that would be changed out um by the right-of-way, um you know, two or three times a year. So something that's heavily landscaped, so when they drive by, it is an attractive um look, not just a barren, blank wall and concrete by any means. That's, that's certainly not our plan.
Councilor Abbott, the ordinance requires a 10 to 15-foot buffer at the front for the double-fronted lots. Um.
And that's.
What is the zoning district?
Is that a, a, is the buffer that's required between the city right-of-way and the front of the facade of the home?
Well, yeah, it would be, yeah, property line, yeah, property line, 10 to 15 feet, yeah. Um and then, you know, there's a certain amount of planning they have to do within there uh that's based on little formulas and the ordinance. What, what is the zoning district that we're attempting to go to?
D5.
D5, so.
Yes, sir.
D5 would also require um buffer of the B-type, which is even a little bit bigger. And so it goes from between 20 and 10 feet. So the rear of the site, the western side of the site would both require buffers between 10 and 20 feet uh that are planted. And then I believe that, I think we talked before, that townhouses require a certain amount of open space within the development. I'm not sure if it's met or not.
Um, it was 30.
Was it 30? I can't remember what we quoted last time.
Yeah, I, I believe it was 30, and we did the calculations, we're almost there, so.
I got you.
Yeah.
Gotcha. You know, say, uh, you know, those are kind of our concerns, and you're just trying to figure out a way to uh get to the middle.
Yeah, well, anytime you have to queue out this much out of a zone district, you can kind of tell that it's not the appropriate zone district if you've got to queue everything out but the use you're trying to do, which is pretty much what we've done here, if we approve it. Um. So I guess my last question is that we have the recommendations from the neighborhood and we have the recommendations from the ZAC. And the staff is in agreement with the recommendations from the neighborhood and the ZF, ZAC. Correct?
Yeah, with, with the queues that were as submitted in the, in the um staff record.
Okay.
From, and then like they said, they were, I believe they were approved by ZAC as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to read the, read it on my phone while I'm looking at the screen on my real computer. So, you know, these phones are big when they're in your pocket, but when you're trying to read off of them, they're not nearly as big as you thought they were. Okay, well, you know, I, I am, I'm willing to go along with what was suggested by a combination of the Neighborhood Association, the ZAC, and the staff, which is what we have in our proposal here. So um I guess I would ask Mr. Hilliard if he's in a similar state of mind or if he's thinking something different.
No, madam, I. Along with the program.
Okay, well, if you would like, if, if, does anyone else have anything that they need to say? Okay, so um at this point, and I just want to confirm one more time, Mr. Gambrell, whatever we approve here today, the ZAC, the ZBA does not have purview to change what we've required in order to accomplish this rezoning, correct?
I don't believe they could vary from the queues, but um that's something I would need to verify, to be honest with you.
I mean, if we put queues in, we want them to be in, we don't want some, someone else. Where is our attorney? Do we have an attorney still on here? Julie Bernard is shown as being on the call. Ms. Bernard, are you there?
I am, I, I was uh, probably my phone wasn't letting me in to where I could, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess the. Okay, um, I guess the question was.
I can hear you.
Could you repeat the question, either you or Tim?
The question, yeah, the question is, if we make, if we place requirements, queue conditions and other, other conditions on the property in order to grant the rezoning, can the zoning board of adjustment give a variance to undo anything that we do?
The zoning board of adjustment exists to, um, rule in cases where a, where it meets, you know, conditions of a, of a hardship that, um, you know, prevent, you know, if the zoning ordinance prohibits the use of a property based on those specific conditions that are laid out for it to be a hardship, they could find, you know, I, I think that could include, you know, the particular zoning of property. I've not looked at it that way, but that, that is the existence of this zoning board of adjustment. But it has to meet that there's some speci, something specific to the property that, uh, you know, the shape of the law to the topography or something, uh, you know, that it's not a financial hardship, you know, that, you know, there, there are several reasons it's not self-created. So unless it meets the conditions of hardship, they should not approve something, um, just because it's asked for.
Yeah, well, I was assuming if it was a requirement in order for us to rezone, they would not be able to change it.
I've never, and Counselor Abbott, I apologize because I have not actually looked at, that, looked at it from that angle and I will be glad to do so. But, um, you know, just generally, the, the ZBA is to prevent the zoning ordinance from just completely depriving people of all rights and their property.
Yeah, and I realize it's supposed to be a hardship and it's not supposed to be a self-imposed hardship, but we've seen a lot of self-imposed hardships be approved or be seen where the rest of us couldn't see them. So, um, I think you've answered my question. I certainly would appreciate some research into it, but I am fine with these required, these queue conditions. And, um, Counselor Hilliard says he is too. Counselor Hilliard, will you make a motion?
Adam, uh, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these with all the queue conditions that, uh, everyone has put forth and, uh, and let's pass this through.
Okay, and I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we will send this to the full council on the date of the staff's choosing. How about that?
That's good to us. I appreciate you guys.
Well, they always choose as quickly as they can. Now, the, uh, I don't believe we have any more cases. Ms. Sims, do we have anything else to discuss before we move on? Okay, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm just muted. Okay, no, ma'am, we don't. That's just, uh, we just only had one case today.
Okay, so we have no hold on new business, so we are ready to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Good, I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, y'all, we're adjourned.